Thumbs up? Okay, thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. I welcome you to our regular meeting of September the 2nd, 2025. Our call meeting to order, we will stand for a pledge of allegiance followed by invocation from Alderman Vaughn and then vice mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The God of creation, the giver of life, the God of the rules, the super rules, the one that sit high and look low, heaven's that seed, the earth's that fruit stood. Almighty, all wise, all new and all powerful, all seeing, hearing, understanding God. Father God in the mighty name of Jesus, here the future hand make service. Father God that you allow to be elected by the people, Father God to handle these affairs of this city. We pray, God, that you would just grant us the wisdom and the knowledge and the understanding to be able to discern the good and the bad and the right and wrong. Lord for these your people that would affect them deals to come. We thank you so much for you just being the one that sit high and look low, the one that knows all things, sees all things, hears all things, understands all things. I pray that you bless us individually, collectively, and one by one. We thank you again for what you are, lives, sports, and marriages you achieve. We thank you for what is in the making, for God that you would be in the midst of it. We will look at every decision that we make, from out of heart, for when you look at out of heart, God, we give all praise and honor and glory to you just because of who you are and where you are. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being here this evening. We will first start with the official agenda and consented items. Do we have any changes suggested for the agenda? Alderman Moreland?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Sistrum?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Skinner?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Pope?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right. If none, then I would suggest a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented items.
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Brooks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Skinner. All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. We do have an agenda, and I will read the consented items. First is consideration of the minutes of the August 15th, 2025 work session of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Then we have consideration of the minutes of the August 19th, 2025 recess meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Under mayor's business, we have consideration of changing the name of Calico Court in Clark Grove Phase Two to honor Chris Taylor by renaming it as Chris Taylor Court. B is consideration of a resolution authorizing the liens for 1249 Mississippi Highway 182 West, 122 Roosevelt Taylor Senior Street, 722 Vine Street, 18 Edgewater Lane, and 117 Curtis Circle as provided in the attachments. Under board business, we have A, consideration of approving the proposed 2026 budget for the 2% funding used by the Mississippi State University Student Affairs in accordance with the requirements of 2022 House Bill 1547. B is consideration of approving the proposed 2026 budget for the 2% funding for Octobahaw County Economic Development Authority, OCITA, in accordance with the requirements of the 2022 House Bill 1547. C is consideration of approving the proposed 2026 budget for the 2% funding for the Visitors and Convention Council, VCC, in accordance with the requirements of the 2022 House Bill 1547. D is a resolution of the mayor and board of Alderman authorizing issuance by the city of Starkville, Mississippi of combined water and sewer system revenue bonds of the municipality, or combined water and sewer system revenue bond of the municipality for sale to the Mississippi Development Bank, or authorizing entering into a loan agreement with the Mississippi Development Bank, all in the maximum principal amount of $10 million in one or more series to provide funds for the purpose of improving, repairing, and extending the existing combined water and sewer system of the municipality and for related purposes. Under the airport, we have acceptance of STF-SOG-3-28-0068-033-2025 grant for runway extension in the amount of $2,635,633, with a 5% match divided between the city of $24,275.57, the county $24,275.57, and MSU $20,807.62. Under engineering, we have consideration of approving task order number two in an hourly not-to-exceed amount of $40,000 for Neil Schaefer, Inc., to provide topographic surveying, hydraulic, and hydrologic analysis and design, and preliminary structural design services for the Old West Point Road Bridge Replacement Project. Two is consideration of approval of an indemnity agreement for non-standard right-of-way improvements at 202 East Gillespie Street between the City and Pure Water Ridge LLC as reviewed and approved by the city attorney. Under finance administration, we have consideration of the acceptance of the fiscal year 9/30/2024 audit of the city of Starkville as prepared by Watkins Ward and Stafford CPA's PLLC. Three is consideration of the approval of the engagement of Watkins Ward and Stafford PLLC for the fiscal year 2025 audit for the city of Starkville, Starkville Wastewater and Starkville Electric. Under human resources, we have consideration of disciplinary action recommended by Sanitation and Environmental Services Director Chris Smiley as a result of IA Number 0811-2025 for sanitation and environmental services employee. Two is request authorization to hire Trenton Evans as a water technician for the utilities department. Three, request authorization to hire Kalia Uhara as a communication and outreach intern for the utilities department. Four, request authorization to hire Nathaniel Hinton as a water distribution supervisor for the utilities department. Five, request authorization to hire Waylon Slider as a temporary full-time meter technician for the utilities department. Six is request authorization to hire Tamarius Miller as a student intern through the work-study program with Starkville Octobahaw Consolidated School District for the utilities department. And I'm going to stop there for a second because, again, I want to highlight this particular work-study program that we're working with the school district on. This is a real opportunity because that particular skill set is a very highly desirable and sought-after skill set for the water district and for the water skills in a utilities department. And so I just think this is a wonderful program and that we should continue it and see where we can expand on it where possible. So I want to commend Mr. Kemp and the school district for that. Seven is request authorization to hire Casey Ray as a temporary part-time aircraft lineman, FBO, for the airport department. Eight is request authorization to hire Cameron Bullard as a full-time aircraft lineman, FBO, in the Starkville Airport Department. And nine is request authorization to hire Ian Carmichael as a non-certified firefighter for the Starkville Fire Department. Under code enforcement, we have, under Mississippi Code Annotated 211911 Sub 2, and is adopted by the city of Starkville Board of Alderman, the following properties are found in violation of said ordinance and are in such a state of uncleanness as to be a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community, and are therefore placed on the property mowing list. That would be 200 Curtis Street, 207 Curtis Street, and 512 Inca. And then utilities, we have consideration of accepting the sole source quote from Wesco Annexter, Inc., for 24 A4 meters in the amount of $6,605.04, in that they are the same meters currently being used. And that concludes the consent agenda. Under, the next item is going to be announcements and comments. From my perspective, I get to make employee introductions, which is always one of the pleasures for me, and it's an opportunity for us to put a face and a name, and for the board to be able to recognize you guys when we see you, at whatever odd times those might be, and for you guys to know who we are as well. So we appreciate it. So first I have Justin Alford, network administrator. Oh, there we go. Okay, I was going to point you out and see if that was right. Justin Alford is originally from Cumberland, Mississippi. He brings a broad range of IT expertise to our team with extensive experience in hardware and software management, network administration, and overall technology integration. He's eager to apply his skills to help streamline and support the city's operations. In this role, Justin will manage and lead the department's core technology platforms, ensuring smooth and secure network functionality. He will also handle technical system administration, technology training, and support a wide range of IT-related functions. Justin holds two associate's degrees in applied sciences from East Mississippi Community College. He also serves in the Army National Guard, thank you for your service, where he is currently ranked as an E5 sergeant. In his free time, Justin enjoys playing games, reading books, and spending time with his friends. Welcome to Starkville. Next, we have Jack Miles. Jack brings a wealth of experience in water treatment and is looking forward to continuing to expand his knowledge and to support and improve the city's water systems. In this role, Jack will oversee the operation of the city water treatment plants, working to assure the public's health and safety. His responsibilities will include monitoring electric consumption, managing chemical usage, overseeing maintenance needs, and supporting equipment repair and replacement. Jack is from Ackerman, Mississippi. He's a graduate of Choctaw High School, Choctaw County High School, excuse me, and holds a Class D Waterwell Operator Certification. In his free time, he enjoys spending time with his family and friends, camping, boating, and fishing. Welcome, Jack. And last, but certainly not least, we have Rachel. Rachel Crockett is the executive administrative assistant. She is an experienced administrative professional with over five years of experience in customer service, banking operations, and office support. She brings a strong commitment to organization, communication, and service, and she's excited to bring that energy to her role with the city. In this position, Rachel will provide vital administrative support to the department, including customer service, communication, and outreach coordination. She'll also play a key role in preparing grant materials, submitting contracts, and maintaining both electronic and manual filing systems. Originally from Duck Hill, Rachel earned a certification in billing, coding, and medical technology from Holmes Community College in 2018, and she's currently pursuing a certification in business administration. She has three fur babies, Cooper, Chief, and Cinder. Outside of work, Rachel enjoys spending time with her family, friends, line dancing, fishing, hunting, exercising, and painting, and taking care of three fur babies, I can see. Welcome, Rachel. Glad to have all of you. Thank you all. We appreciate you taking the time to be here this evening. All right. I also want to say that Get Swept Up is tomorrow. For those, I think we've got some city teams that are going to be working that. I think it starts at 7:30 down at the partnerships, at 7:00 or 7:30? Who remembers? Mr. Kemp, you've got to have a team that's down there.
We're starting at 7:00.
Okay, well, in that case, we'll all be starting at 7:00. But we have a couple of teams down there that will be doing Get Swept Up. It's a big deal, so don't run over anybody you see out there with a garbage bag and gloves because they're doing the city a service in preparation for our first home game, which will be on Saturday evening. It's going to be an afternoon or late afternoon game, 6:30, I believe, is the start. We also have a 27-team tournament for fast pitch, so, out at Cornerstone. So we've got some activities going on, and so it'll be a busy weekend for us, which is always exciting. Now, that kind of concludes me. Any Alderman comments? Alderman Moreland?
Not at the moment.
Okay, Alderman Sistrum?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Just general comments for the moment.
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Skinner?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you all. All right, with that, we will go to citizens' comments, and now is the opportunity for those of you who are here for the public hearing for the tax issue, let me just say, this is public, this is citizen comments, generalized to just about anything you want to talk about, but if you're here for the public hearing associated with the tax and the budget, this would not be that opportunity. So, Mr. Turner, always lovely to see you. Three minutes are available for anyone who wishes to give us comments, compliments, criticisms, whatever. Mr. Turner, go ahead, please, sir.
Evergreen, my name's Avanton Ward. Ever to the mayor, to the police chief, to the fire chief, to the sanitation. We still want to keep in mind about the comment I made at the last meeting about the lot of buildings across from here. Ever, it's a breeding ground for people that are not from here, and we don't want them to become a victim of being robbed or being mistreated. Also, we'd like to thank the police department for their teamwork. A guy tried to run away from there, we're in handcuffs, but we got him, and last year I think that someone called themselves going to rob the bank in broad daylight, and we took care of that as well. But anyway, we need to be careful in these days and times, Amelia.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Anyone else under citizens' comments? All right, I will close it as citizens' comments. We have--
Mayor, there's--
Oh, I'm sorry. Need to come on up, sweetie. You'd identify yourself, please.
Hello, my name is Catherine Henderson. So I was in Pennsylvania over the summer for a fund for research internship, and one thing that I got to see while I was at Penn State was how improving in, you know, green spaces and public transit, stuff that this city and university improved a lot of when I came back, and it was really exciting to see, you know, as I was leaving the state and came back two months later, there were new planted trees everywhere. I'm seeing buses going down routes that I hadn't seen before. So it was really exciting to kind of see some of the development that I saw in a place that has been around longer and has attracted more people for a while, start to, like, come here. It was a very inspirational thing to see, you know, us trucking along down here, and to keep the trees and developments in public transit coming because, as a student at MSU, parking is always a nuisance and a nightmare, and the more opportunities we have to move people in buses versus cars, the better. And I had a couple ideas while I was, you know, traveling around the U.S. in my car. One thing that I saw when I vacationed in Waynesville, they have a cute little downtown, kind of similar to our Main Street, is they have little boxy billboard things for people to, you know, stick a flyer for a cool thing that's happening around at, like, a stop sign intersection or a light intersection where you would normally be waiting, take a second and look and see what's happening at the town. You know, as a student, as a member of the student body and student org leader, I work with flyers a lot. I work with putting flyers up in places, and I think they're really good for people who maybe are not exactly sure what to search for social media-wise, to kind of get involved in things around. So I think it'd be a pretty efficient and cool way to engage communal activities, at least along, you know, Main Street and University Drive. And the last little area is, I've lived along Lee Boulevard for a little over a year now, and I've seen a lot of people walking around, up and down everywhere, all the time, especially during game day times as well. And the walkability on both sides of the road is something that I think could have some targeted areas for improvement on. The sidewalks are often not consistent, or there's not, you know, designated crosswalks, especially around, like, the gas station. It's a pretty open and sunny area that's really hot to traverse towards, so if there's any opportunities, just more trees, more trees, more trees, that would be great. And then I often see people walking on the opposite side of the Lee Boulevard, oftentimes through grass, oftentimes muddy with how rainy it's been. And it could be a fun little thing to kind of jump in on that would immediately improve quality of life for a lot of people that not just live on Lee Boulevard, but also frequent it to get to their locations on game days or anything in between. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Well timed.
Well timed. All right, anyone else? Anyone else? All right, I will close it as citizens' comments, I apologize, and move to public hearings. We have a public hearing that's a 211911 for a property located at 511 Whitfield Street.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Alderman, nice to see you all this evening. I am here to present a 211911 dilapidated structure on 511 Whitfield Street. That parcel number's going to be 102B00148.00. This is essentially just right on the corner, right next to Armstrong Middle School. The property owner of this comes back to Cypress Property Services LLC, which is out of Alabama. Our investigation started on August 1st, where Lieutenant Carruthers took photos of the structure just from the outside and from the roadway at about 12:12 in the afternoon. This is what it looks like. So essentially, the things that we were looking for is, over here on this left-hand side, the soffit is missing underneath the eve, and we also have a soffit down here, might be a little hard to see, that's coming off the eve. And then, one of the exterior walls is bowing outwards. So, we went ahead and sent a notice of violation on August 13th of general nuisance, and then issued public hearing notices through the mail certified on August 19th. On top of the public hearing notice being mailed, we put one on the property, the door, and then also we put one here at City Hall for the public to view. During the process, on August 18th, we had an administrative inspection warrant signed by Judge Kelly so that we could take a look at the structure a little bit better, and we went ahead and executed the warrant myself with Lieutenant Carruthers and building official Steve McMullin on August 21st at about 8:25 in the afternoon, or 8:25 in the morning. So here's a couple things that we noticed. Obviously, like we were talking about earlier, we did notice a soffit that was coming down off the west wall. The western apartment door obviously has some water damage and is, you know, clearly damaged to where there's a, it's hard to see in this picture, but you can see the inside. On the southwestern corner, they had essentially kind of made shift to cover up a hole, but we still have some bowing on the outside, and we have a hole that's seeping through, so you can actually see the interior from this hole right here. On top of the eastern wall, we have field paint that's coming off, and then, again, our soffit is having issues with damage. On the inside of apartment two, we have some ceiling damage, essentially from water. Water had gotten in because it's a flat roof. The bathroom, we have bathroom wall crack, again, from water damage. And, excuse the pictures being so dark in this apartment, the second apartment's a little bit better, and some more water damage. Then we went to the first apartment, which is on the north side of the building, and again, we have more ceiling damage, again, from water. We have vines that are starting to come in from outside to inside, so we have some vegetation coming into the building itself. We have a hole that's exposing the exterior elements. You can't see in the picture, but if you go in person, you can see the sunlight actually coming through the hole. And then we have some floor damage. It's hard to say, it's hard to show in the picture, but it's creaky, and there are spots where we didn't even want to go past it just because it's too soft. And obviously, we have some major ceiling damage coming in from the bathroom, again, from water damage. So, all that being said, we issued that, and then on August 29th, I did a reinspection of the property at about 10:20 in the morning. Again, no changes. I would like to note to the board that the owners of the property were actually out on the property during the inspection, and he's very compliant in trying to figure out what he can do with the property and working with the city on how he can, just due to the fact that it's so close to another property lot. But, that's essentially all our conclusion for 511 Whitfield.
Okay, thank you. Let me see, is the owner here? Owner of the property here?
I don't see him in, I don't see him in here.
All right. Mr. McMullin. Salvageable?
The house been demoed.
Then not salvageable? All right, well, that takes care of that. So they got a demo permit and indeed demoed the property. Okay, all right.
Answer them?
Well, that pretty well took care of that. Another cleanup opportunity. Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and open it as a public hearing because that's how it is advertised, so I will open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter related to, what is this, 511 Whitfield Street as a 211911, now would be your opportunity. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and I would suggest that the board go ahead and make the finding of the 211911, and we will monitor the demolition and make sure that the property itself is fully cleaned up by the time they're done, but in this instance, I think we have an opportunity to go ahead and just make that finding. So, I suggest that, if I could get a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion from Alderman Sistrum. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Moreland. Any other discussion? All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you all. All right, now we have our second public hearing of the tax millage and budget for the city of Starkville for the fiscal year 25, 2025, 2026. And I'm going to make a wild guess that there are a lot of folks in the audience who want to speak. So, from a public hearing standpoint, we'll have 15 minutes. Generally, give 15 minutes to both sides, so we will start with what I'm going to presume is going to be the more vocal side, which will be those against a tax millage increase. So, if you would, if there was a single spokesperson, that would be lovely. If not, and everyone wishes to have a say, then we're going to have to, everybody's going to have to cut it a little on the short side because 15 minutes is what you're going to have, so, if you would. Whoever wishes to come forward now, if you would, please do so and identify yourself.
Good evening, my name's Kelly Prather, and I think I know most of you, and I first want to start by saying, again, thank you for your service and all that all of you do for the city, Chief Fowler, appreciate your department and our fire department as well. You guys do great work for City of Starkville, you spend a lot of time and effort trying to improve our community, and we know that, and we appreciate that. But, I want to speak for just a couple of minutes, and I don't want any 15 minutes, that's for sure, but, you know, once again, we find ourselves, as I said a couple weeks ago, with an affordability problem. And our affordability problem is around Octobahaw County, city of Starkville, and what it costs to live here. And we also see now that here we are again with another millage increase that this board wants to take, or is considering, and the city's considering. And, you know, I hope that you're going to listen, and your mind's not already made up. I doubt that's the case, but we really do need to stop and think about what we're doing so that we won't continue this process over and over. We all know what's going to happen in 2027 with the reappraisal of property taxes, and when that happens, there's going to be surplus of money. I believe that, and I think you guys do too, and there'll be an opportunity at that time to maybe even come back, and what you should be thinking about, how do we reduce the millage rate when that occurs? As an example, the city of Ollie Branch has already taken that step and announced that that is exactly what they're going to do when that reassessment comes in. They're going to reduce their millage rates a little bit for their people, and that's what we need to think about for our people in the city of Starkville. So that's one thing we know is certainly going to occur. If we stop and look at the developments that have taken place in Starkville, that's going on, look at the condos, and we all know what the tax fees on condos are, they're really high. Okay, we got condos coming in, we got the Oakvale neighborhood, we've got, what's, the growth has gone in Adelaide as an example, we've got Westlake, example, Country Club Estates as an example. There's been a lot of new development that's taken place in the city of Starkville. And I think one of the things we need to go back and look, and I'm going to ask that, you know, you guys take a look at it, and certainly, I know the Starkville Daily News is here, Columbus Dispatch is here, let's run a story, and let's take a good look at over the last eight years of the revenue that's come in for the city, over the last eight years. And then let's take a look at where does that go from a tax perspective? Let's look at what the county gets, let's look at what the school board gets, and let's look at what the city of Starkville gets. So we expose, and everybody can see, so everybody knows, because there's, and we all know, there's a lot of confusion around ad lorm taxes out there, and some people, maybe it's not as educated, and I wouldn't say I'm greatly educated on it, other than to know millage rates continue to go up. And I think you have to try to find a way, where can you make those cuts to get us to 2027 so that you don't increase the millage rate? And at the same-- And we, at the same time, find a way to support our police and fire department with what we're doing. I think there's some places where you can do it, places where you might not want to do it. But there are certainly some places where we can make some cuts to keep the city going in the right direction at the same time, get us to 2027. So here's what I'd like to ask for you. I'm asking you to vote no. Don't increase the millage rate and put more taxes on the city of Starkville. We've already done it this year. We raised water rates, right? Water rates have gone up, garbage rates have gone up. Now, I know you may not call that a tax, but that's on your bill. That's happened to the citizens already. Is that correct? This year, we raised water and we raised garbage fees. So I would ask you to vote no. And then what I would like to say is that we commit to doing something, as I've started talking to more people about this. One of the things that comes up is, and some of you have said this to me, oh, it's the, this, that, the county gets more of the, the millage rate, or the school board's helping raise your millage rate, and, and all these things are intertwined. And then I've heard the conversation, right, well, the county supervisors don't cooperate with the city, and the city doesn't cooperate with county. It's just like fingers are going everywhere. Somebody take the bull by the horns. Let's get the city, Alderman, let's get the county supervisor, and let's get somebody on the school board, and let's get everybody on the same page and figure out how we help our citizens in Starkville reduce the millage rate and reduce the taxes. It's a runaway train. Somewhere, we've got to stop it and slow it down. So I would ask that we do that. Somebody take the bull by the horns, and I know it's hard, but let's get everybody in the same room and see if we can't find some compromise to what we're doing for the citizens of Actonahaw County and the city of Starkville. And then I think there has to be, that, that's the long-term plan, I think, for community affordability. And then finally, I'd say there is another solution, and I know you don't want to tackle it, and I've heard that a little bit. But there's an opportunity to put a hotel motel tax in place that is more meaningful than the one we have at 2%. I think it expires, and I may be wrong, I spoke to the Attorney General's office last week, I think it expires in 2027. But there's some opportunity, I believe, in a hotel motel tax that could be meaningful, and that would take care every year of what we need to do with police and fire. We could take that off the table, and that would make things a lot easier for us if we put a meaningful hotel motel tax in place for the city of Starkville, okay? So you face difficult issues here. But consider the affordability of what's going on in Starkville for our citizens. And, you know, there's people sitting in this room right here, and everybody you talk to, somebody's moved here from Portland, Oregon, somebody's sitting back here has moved here from Baton Rouge. I moved here from the Memphis area. Everybody that comes here and moves to Starkville says the same thing. Why are taxes so high in Starkville? And it's true. It's what we face. That's the reality of our people and our citizens. You know, my tax rate goes up, I'm going to be able to pay it. I can pay it. But there's other people where every little bit continues to hurt. And sometimes you've got to take a stand, and I think that time is now to say, we're going to figure out how to do this without raising the millage rates. And I'd just like to ask, if there's anybody else in this room that is opposed to raising taxes, can you just raise your hand if you're opposed to raising taxes? So I'm not the only one. There's many that are not here. So I, listen, I, you face difficult choices, and I don't have all the answers, but I want to help be part of the solution for what we're doing in our city, and I appreciate what you got to do.
All right, thank you, Mr. Prather. All right, he seemed to speak for everybody. Does that mean we have some others that want to speak? Or is that kind of the, the sum total there? Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Do we have anybody who's in support of a millage increase? Anyone? All right, seeing none. I will close it then as a public hearing. And I'm going to, I'm going to address a couple of things. There are areas where we have cooperated with the county. Specifically, we have shared costs for overlaying roads, for example. In particular, Marvell Howard was one supervisor who shared that with us, as did Brickley Miller back when she was a supervisor. So there have been opportunities for us to do those things, and we have, we have done that. And we are exploring other potential opportunities. But again, it's, it is a, it's a long road to hoe, and, and everybody has their own set of obligations. So I say that just because of that. And, and let me be clear on the hotel. The hotel motel tax, the 2% that is in existence, has no grandfather to it. It is in perpetuity, it goes to the VCC slash CBB for tourism. The 1% that we got when we did Cornerstone, that does have a, that does have a life to it. So just to be clear that there is a hotel motel that, that has a life and one that does not. And that one goes directly to CBB to promote tourism, so, just letting you know. Yes, sir?
May I ask, do you have to do a referendum or not raise the hotel motel tax?
That would depend on how the legislature allows us to do it. The legislature will sometimes allow you to do a reverse referendum, or they will require a referendum, but that is a legislative determination through the local and private, so.
We have, the city has to initiate that though, right?
Yes, yes. We would, we would need to initiate that. Okay, all right, so I'm going, and I'm going to, I'm going to get my little bitty soapbox going here for just a minute because there is not, there's not a soul up here that wants to raise taxes. I guarantee you that. It's not a desire of ours. Not only do we not want to make our constituents unhappy, but none of us want to pay it either. I have my own tax bill that's fairly stout, because I have commercials that have the 15% rate. So I don't do this lightly, and I certainly don't do it based on me being exempt from it. But the budget is what the board prioritizes. It's what's important to your community. That's what, these are policy, policy decision makers up here, and the policy is pretty much determined by budget. How much do you want to spend on your police? How much do you want to spend on your fire? How much do you want to spend on your streets? How much do you want to spend on your parks? Those are the things that are determined through the budget. And I, for one, believe that you get extraordinary value from what we do. I, I look at the department heads out here, and I know that they were extremely hard to keep there from being any fluff, any excess, any, for want of a better word, inefficiencies in what they do. When they bring a budget to us, they generally are asking for things like, we've got a 25-year-old piece of equipment, for example. And we've, we've driven things till the wheels fall off. I mean, we have done those things. And so I think it's important to understand that our, our people, these are local people. These are the people that you have next door to you, that are your neighbors, friends, you go to church with them, your kids go to school with them, so we're not out here padding the budget just for the fun of it. We're trying to provide you the service that we think is important. And when somebody calls me and says, for example, we have something in a contingency, and part of the reason we have something in a contingency, because as if, you know, if you travel Garrett Road, you remember a few months ago Garrett Road had a, had a sloughing, a failure, a bank failure, and we had to spend, Cody, what did we have to spend? 75, was it over $100,000 to get that fixed? Okay, well, my bad. I, I divided it because it hurt so bad. But it's, that's the kind of thing that we don't have the ability to plan for. We have a sinkhole over at Cross Gates that I know cost in the $75,000 range. None of it anticipated. And so when you see something in a contingency fund, that's part of what we're trying to do is make sure that we can do those things that are immediate and necessary. We've got bridges that are going to need to be managed. And the business with the water rates, it weren't, were actually water rates, they were sewer rates that went up. And yes, in order for us to take care of an aging infrastructure at our sewer system, which is basically a $40 million repair, replacement, and upgrade, we've got $25 million or so that that's where we're going with the bonds that we just passed, the resolution for the bonds that we just passed. We can't not do that, because if we don't, we don't grow. We don't maintain, and we don't grow. So, you know, those are the kinds of things that we are reaching a point in our city's existence when a lot of the things that were working fine are not working. And I draw the analogy, I've got a whole lot of air conditioning units that I've had to replace over the last three or four years because they've just flat aged out. My stuff was built all the same age. It's all pretty much the same, same years that they were built, and so I'm having to do that. And that's kind of what we're doing now, is we're trying to take care of things that have long been underground. We don't see them, we didn't necessarily do anything, but just mend, and now we need to do replacements. And so I, I just want you to understand that none of us are doing this frivolously. I, I understand what you're saying. Affordability is certainly an issue. I have people who also come to me and say, I don't know what people are complaining about. I came from X. And it's significantly less expensive here than it was there, so it, it cuts both ways. So I, I will get off my soapbox now. I'll let somebody else get on theirs, and we'll sit, we'll see where we go. But basically, we are at the point where we have to determine what that resolution for setting that fiscal year tax millage will be. And so Alderman Sistrunk?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to make a motion, make a motion, see where that goes, and then we'll regroup if it doesn't pass. But I would like to say, in the, in the meantime, the county is going through the same process right now that we're going through. They actually have a work session Thursday morning at 8 o'clock. If, if you'd like to get up and out, I'm not an early bird, but, but perhaps some of y'all might wish to go sit in on that work session. And they are, I watched their meeting today. They're talking about leaving their millage where it is, so no increase. But what's different about their leaving their millage where it is with no increase is that they are 90, 95% of the way through with the sale of the hospital. There are 59 mills that they carry, as their tax burden to the people of Starkville includes four mills of hospital debt. Now, they, they are keeping that four mills, they're not reducing it because of uncertainty of the sale of the hospital. And I can, I can sort of understand that, but they could also split the baby if they would. They could keep two, reduce two. Because I do think that hospital sale is going to go through, and I think they think that hospital sale is going to go through. So if, if you're here talking to us about not raising ours, reach out to your supervisor too. This, this is a, a shared situation. We, we all are part of that. The city's portion is the lowest of the three numbers that are in there, and I think you get the most benefit from the, the city's portion of, of, I'd say, first, the city, schools if you have children, schools if you're a citizen, because I think an educated public is important. And then lastly, you probably get less for the dollars that you pay the county than anything else. But reach out to your supervisor. They could keep your millage flat. Fiscal year '27 will be fiscal year '27, and we will, we will evaluate assessments. We will evaluate what our needs are next year. We will evaluate what our revenues are at that point in time. If we've identified any additional monies that we can, can, can add to our, our revenue streams, we'll, we'll do that. But that's, that's fiscal '27. Fiscal '26 sets us up for fiscal '27 and gets us through this year. So having, having said all that, I, I would say that we've, we've had quite a bit of discussion amongst ourselves at work sessions. We've heard from people here in the audience. We've heard from people on Facebook. The, the, there's actually in, amongst the people that I've talked to, there's a fair bit of support and understanding of the need for a tax increase. Something in that two, two and a half mil range. So I've, I've listened, I've heard, we've gone back. I've, I've tried to think, where can we cut so that we don't put ourselves in a bad position for fiscal '27 and do everything that we need to do in '26? And I'm going to make a motion that we set our tax millage for next year at 34 mills. That's a two-mill increase. And for purpose of the budget, what would, what would be adjusted from where we were looking is that we would delay the salaries until the first pay period ending in January. We would reduce the police cameras from 25 down to 15. And we would reduce the contingency budget that we have to, to get us to an even two, two mills.
Contingency reduced to how much?
27,000. It's .08 mills. No, it's not fine.
All right, just as I, you know, we're talking about sloughing off of Garrett Road.
Yep, 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 got it.
All right, so can I repeat that? We've got, delay the salaries till January 1, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the?
The first pay period ending in January.
Okay, all right, first pay period in January. Reduce the cameras from 15, from 25 to 15, and reduce the contingency, contingency to 27,000. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So, and your proposal is for a 34-mill?
Yes.
Tax rate. Okay, do I have a second for that?
I want to make a comment first and then second. That's okay. Although you do have a second, but I just want to comment. Um, so going back to why we're having to do this, I have talked to a lot of y'all, and I'm telling you, it's not easy. I have scratched my head, and I promised everybody that I've talked to that I was looking for other ways to keep from doing this. 2027 tax reassessment, we've gone over that. But what do we do from here till '27? I've got Greensboro Street, Cody, we had a storm driving collapse over there, correct? This has just been within the last couple of weeks. We did have Pat Station Road, correct, storm drain. Bridge at Highland State's going into that neighborhood, same thing. It's bad shape. Now, the county is trying to help partner with us on that, Alderman, well, supervisor, however. When I said I was looking for other ways, I meant that. I'm going to Jackson next week, sit down and talk to people, but it's going to take more than just Starkville. We need to get a joint effort, and we need to get other people on board. The ultimate goal is to lower taxes for the city of Starkville. We want to do that. But until we can find other ways to offset this stuff with our hands being tied as municipalities and what we can do on cost recovery and revenues, we don't have options with that. Like you said, the hotel tax that that goes to CDV, we don't get that. There are other ways. It's not something that we can do right now, but it is long-term. That is what the wholehearted intention is. Because what this tax increase does, it just gets us by. And as a city, we need to get ahead, and I, and it's not fair to tax y'all for that. So we are looking for other ways for that, to get ahead. Because a lot of what we're doing now is reactive to what we should have been proactive for, and we didn't have the money to do it. So to everybody I spoke to, when I said I promised I was looking for other ways, I did not lie. I am. Probably to the point it's driving me a little insane at times. But just so you know, this is not easy, but this is a decision I'm making off of what's best, what I think is for the city. And I'm making that decision, whether you agree with me or not, I hope all of you can at least respect that because I'm making a stand, and I'm not making an easy decision. But yes, you have my second.
Okay, so I have a second. All right, further discussion? Further discussion? All right, seeing none, then I will, we'll call for a vote. If you would, please answer yea or nay. As a city clerk, call as your name.
I'm sorry. Alderman Moreland.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Skinner.
Nay.
Alderman Brooks.
Nay.
Alderman Pocup.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, by a vote of four to three, the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. All right, moving along, then we have a consideration for a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget for the city of Starkville. Alderman Sistrunk?
I'd, I'd like to make that motion, and I would like to add to the adoption of the fiscal year 25, 26 budget for the city of Starkville. I would like to include and to amend the non-general fund budgets to reflect the salary adjustments consistent with the ones that are being given in the general fund. Because those are not built, those are not built into those budgets just now. And so I would like to amend the documents that they've been looking at to include, include that.
All right, you got that? Miss, okay, you got that, Hardman, Hardman? Okay, so I have a motion from Alderman Sistrunk, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Moreland. Okay, any further discussion? We'll go with this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yea.
Nay.
Oh goodness, okay, well, in that case, we'll, we'll go back to, if you would, please answer yea or nay. As a city clerk, call as your name.
Alderman Moreland.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Skinner.
Nay.
Alderman Brooks.
Nay.
Alderman Pocup.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, that, by a vote of four to three, the motion passes. Thank you so much. All right, moving along, we will go to our claim stocket.
Move approval.
Motion, motion from Alderman Sistrunk, thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Pocup. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, and opposed? All right, thank you. Motion carries. And that takes us to, that takes us to a closed determination session. I would like to go into, we need to, I have a motion to go into a closed determination session to determine the need for executive session. Alderman Vaughn, was that you? I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn, do I have a second?
Sure.
Second from Alderman Brooks. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will be going into a closed session to determine the need for executive session. If you would, please clear the room.